Planning Commission is now in order. I'm going to be taking over for our Chairman this evening, so please be gentle on me. We have Sanaa Burhan of the Islamic Center of North Valley, and she will offer our invocation. And Commissioner Harvey will lead us in the pledge. Will everyone please rise?
In the name of God most gracious, most merciful, our Lord enlarge our chest ease our difficulties and untie the knot from our tongue so that we may be clear in what we say, and we say what pleases you and make you happy. Our Lord make us of those whom you bestow your mercy upon and of those whom you bless and protect. We ask you, God, that you ease the suffering of those victims in the tsunami and you send them mercy and aid in Japan and the suffering of those who are caught in the liberation battle around the world. Amen.
Please remain standing and join me in honoring our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Can we have roll call?
Commissioners Carvey Elihu.
Here.
Randy Hall.
Here.
Cassandra Harvey.
Here.
Raj Marley.
Here.
Fabian Tarassiano.
Here.
Vice Chairman Dan Jacobs.
Here.
Chairman James Vos is absent. We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, it's time for, this evening, for public business from the floor. If an individual is unable to stay through the entire meeting due to extenuating circumstances, a total of 10 minutes is provided at this time during which input may be given regarding agenda items. Individual speakers are limited to two minutes each. Do we have any speakers this evening?
Not requesting to speak early, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any person who would like to address the Planning Commission on any agendized item is requested to complete a speaker card for the recording secretary and identify the agenda item you would like to discuss. Each person will be given an opportunity to address the Planning Commission at the time such item is discussed by the Planning Commission. Speaker cards are available at the rear of the council chambers. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. Okay, uncontested public hearing. The oral staff report will not be presented if no one in the audience wishes to speak in the opposition to the item to be heard, and two, the applicant has reviewed the staff report and agrees to abide by the conditions recommended in the report, and three, the members of the commission wish to waive the staff report. The chairman will then entertain a motion to act on that item. Number one, on the consent calendar, approval of minutes for the regular meeting of February 28th. Do we have a motion and a second on this item?
I'll move to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of February 28, 2011.
Second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please vote. Okay, motion passes.
Yes, motion passes six zero.
Okay. Next, item number two, zone change number 10-03 and conditional use permit number 10-23 for rezoning of property from semi-rural residential 2.5 and construction of a 1.5 megawatt photovoltaic solar electric generating facility in the rural residential 2.5 acre zone. The public hearing is now open on this matter. Let the record reflect that we have, well, on this, I guess we received conditional acceptance, and we have a letter in your packet from Sunlight Partners. Okay. Do we have any speakers on this, Mr. Lutowski?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so why don't we hear a staff report?
Members of the commission, the request that is before you is two separate items, as you indicated. One is a rezoning of the property from semi-rural residential to rural residential 2.5. The other is a conditional use permit, a request for the construction of a 1.5 megawatt photovoltaic solar electrical generating facility on a site approximately 20 acres in size at the northwest corner of 40th Street East and Avenue K8. The reason that you have the zone change in front of you is that by city ordinance, solar generating facilities are required to be placed within the RR 2.5 zone and are subject to a conditional use permit. That is the reason that you also have the conditional use permit in front of you. The applicant's request, as indicated to you, is to create a photovoltaic solar energy generating plant. This particular type of technology would directly convert sunlight into electrical energy. It does not use water, steam, liquid of any kind as a part of that process. As you may recall, there have been a number of other locations in the city where such facilities have been approved, and it is consistent from our standpoint with the city's general plan policies that do encourage the use and promotion of alternative energy, including wind and solar. This particular project would operate year-round. It does consist of rows of photovoltaic panels on a single axis, and the maximum height profile of the panels is projected to be about eight feet from grade when they are fully extended. The applicant, it would be required as a part of this particular application to provide irrevocable offers of dedication for surrounding streets, Avenue K8 and 37th Street East. Those streets would not, however, require improvements, nor would additional improvement at this time be required on 40th Street East, given the fact that the facility, once developed, would be expected to generate approximately five vehicle trips per week. From staff's perspective, that does not seem to be adequate in terms of traffic generation to warrant additional improvement to the existing roadway. The applicant would be required to provide fencing around the site. That fencing does need to be set back a distance of approximately 10 feet, and the applicant would be required to provide screening landscaping within that setback distance and irrigate that. We would encourage for the applicant the use of plant material that would adapt fairly rapidly to rainfall that does fall naturally. There are a number of options for providing this, and as we've indicated to you, there are other developers who have gotten approval of these similar facilities and have incorporated those types of approaches into their landscape plan. The applicant would be required to comply with environmental requirements as established by the State Department of Fish and Game, as well as mitigation requirements that are applicable during construction activities, including limits on hours of operation of construction and requirements for making sure that they do not create dust and other problems. We do have for you a couple of revisions in looking at the draft conditions, particularly a couple of the standard conditions at the request of the applicant. There are a couple of standard conditions that we determined really are not applicable to a facility of this kind. We have indicated to you a revised condition number one that calls those out, specifically standard condition number four, which requires the provision of 360-degree architecture on any buildings that would be built. There are no buildings, obviously, proposed for this site. They are simply the structures that are developed as a part of the PV facility. And condition number 24, which is a requirement to install a clarifier or other best management practice to treat first flush, because there is not really a provision for providing pavement or impervious areas a part of this, there's no logical reason to require that first flush treatment. So therefore, we have recommended that both of those conditions not be required on this particular project. All the others, as indicated to you, would remain in effect. We have recommended to you that on the zone change, you recommend approval to the city council of the zone change approval, and we have recommended to you approval of the conditional use permit with the conditions as listed for you in the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Lutowski. Is the applicant present? Would you like to speak this evening?
Maybe just some initial remarks. We're thrilled to be working with the City of Lancaster. We've had some great discussions with city staff, as well as Jason Cottle. We're looking forward to working on additional projects with the city, and we look forward to a successful completion of this project. I would say that we've reviewed the initial study. I think that all of the issues that citizens might be concerned about with respect to whether it be noise or pollution and so forth have been addressed well in that document, and we feel comfortable with the mitigation measures. I'll defer, I think there's some folks here that have some comments, and I'd like a chance to, at the end of their comments, respond to any of their concerns that they may have.
Okay, and we may have some questions for you after we hear some speakers also.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have some speakers this evening?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have two submitted speaker cards. The first is Jim Karen.
This is Jim, and I'm Brian. I think I'll go first if that's okay.
Okay, Brian Mills.
Mr. Mills?
Forgive me, I'm a little nervous, never been in this type of procedure before. The reason I'm here is, if I may, may I show you on this picture here?
If you can, he has a pointer. We won't be able to hear you if you walk over there.
The blue area here is where the solar, I call it a salt, for lack of a better term, solar farm is going to go in. This, where the pointer is now, that's my five acres. Where the pointer is right now, that's my home. If I back out of my driveway just a little bit too far, my concern is I'm going to hit an eight-foot chain link fence. That's my concern with what's going on here. My concern is that they talked about the pitch being eight-foot high, being surrounded by an eight-foot fence. When we moved out to 40th East and K8, we were moving into a rural area. It was zoned rural. It was zoned semi-rural. You know, we always know that the city can change zoning to meet the bigger picture of the plan, but it just concerns us that when we're coming down 40th Street to our home, seeing an eight-foot chain link fence, it's almost like living beside the prison. I mean, I don't know what it's going to look like. I spoke to Mark before, and he said there's not going to be any concertina wire or anything like that, but, and then I also heard something about some shrubbery, some irrigation. I'm concerned how, where we're going to get water for that. I have a well. I know there's no city water there. I guess my concern, I know I'm running out of time, but is this is not what I bought my five acres in the middle of nowhere to get, and I'm concerned about what it's going to do to my property value when it is time to move on. Another concern, Mark's addressed a lot of concerns already, but another concern that we would have is health issues. How much study has went into health issues? You know, I don't know the correct terminology, I'm a kind of a simple guy, but the electric, the health issues of being that close to something of this magnitude. I think that's really all I got to say. I'm out of time, but, you know, standing on my front porch looking out, I don't want to see an eight-foot chain link fence during the day, or spotlights and cameras and five trucks a week pulling up doing service.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Mr. Karen?
Yeah, I think Brian said a lot of everything I was going to say. I live right next to him, and I can see the same thing he's going to say. But why can't they move this someplace else? There's thousands of acres to the east of me. Why don't they put it over by the soccer field, where there's a lot of empty spots? Why do you got to put it next to houses? Don't make sense to me. Where are they going to get the water? Wouldn't it be reasonable to put it next to the soccer field? There's a lot of extra playing over that way. And there's one that's going down by M and 40th. There's one going down there also, I think. They got a sign up down there. Why can't they put both of them down there? It's a wide-open area. My complaint is why they got to put it next to houses? Don't make sense to me. Do you want to live next to one of them? I don't. It's up to you guys, but that's all I got to say. Brian said a lot of stuff I was going to say. It's just in the wrong area, as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
Thank you very much. What's the, do you have some, I'm sorry, commissioners have some questions? Would you like the applicant to come back up? Would you like to address some of their concerns?
Yeah, absolutely.
And then we'll have a few questions for you.
Yeah, so just some clarification on a couple of points, and I'm not sure where the five trips a week came from. That's not necessarily a number that was supplied by the applicant, but this type of facility requires very little maintenance. The primary reasons that anybody would be visiting the site would be either to wash the panels, which is only a once or twice-a-year event, or to keep the vegetation at appropriate levels, which, depending on the time of year, you may be more frequent, but certainly not five trips a week. I would not even envision five trips a month to the site, or if there were some technical issue that had to be addressed. In terms of water, once the, you know, the City of Lancaster has their approved desert vegetation list of plants, and we intend to select appropriate vegetation from that list, that will hopefully provide some element of beauty to the neighborhood, as well as screening it, not only screening the plant, but screening the chain link fence from the view of the two neighbors that have expressed concern. I think there's adequate distance for the neighbor backing out of his garage. The city's approved the site plan with appropriate setbacks and distances there. That shouldn't be a concern. In terms of electromagnetic issues, this type of plant is, any type of solar facility like this takes and creates energy on what's called a direct current basis, and the concerns with EMF are only on an alternating current basis. So there is no EMF concern in terms of any radiation coming from the plant anymore. In terms of EMFs, you know, the concern, I know there's a utility line that runs down K8 just behind this gentleman's home, and that would probably put significant more EMFs out than anything that would be coming out of this plant. In terms of why it's there, I think one of the things that we're trying to do, and several other developers like us, is we are what's called a distributed generation developer, which means we're locating smaller utility-scale plants in neighborhoods where it can serve the utility needs, the generation needs, or the load capacity of the surrounding community. And I think that really falls in line with what Lancaster is striving to do with their solar plan. Anyway, that's all I have. And just as a follow-up, there are certain requirements in terms of, you know, you mentioned the soccer field. I mean, clearly, there's lots of open space to put these, but there's very, very limited connection capacity in terms of locating appropriate connections to the grid and having capacity in that connection. And so we, just by way of information for those present, we probably go through 1,000 sites in the valley to get just a handful of those that can meet the requirements for appropriate connection to the grid. Anyway, that's all. If you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Do we have any questions for the applicant?
You said about the EMF, and my concern was this noise. We want to have good neighbors.
Yeah.
Not five trips a week, maybe two a year to clean, maybe even less than that. Now, this plant, when it's operating on a bright sunny day and it's 100 degrees out, is going to make as much noise as?
You know, they liken it, so the noise comes not from the panels themselves, of course, but there's a small motor that would turn the panels to track the sun. Most people liken that noise to the sound of your refrigerator in your own kitchen, and you literally have to be that close to hear that noise. So they're fairly signed, I think. I think it's addressed in the initial study, the noise issue, that there's relatively no noise that can be heard from the plant. There's some slight noise that maybe come from the inverters, but that noise dissipates rapidly and can't be heard beyond the fence of the plant.
Is that it for you? Any other question?
I actually have a question. I know you mentioned that there are no concerns or there are no health risks, but I think that's a legitimate concern that the neighbors would have. Do you have any data that could perhaps, I would say, back that up, what your comments are?
Yeah, so, I mean, it's fairly common knowledge that direct current doesn't create EMFs, but there is also a 1991 report by the Environmental Health Services dealing with EMFs, and anybody can access that report on their website. And it's, the conclusion of the report is there's no direct causality with EMFs in this type of generation.
Do you know what timeframe that that study was done on, like, in terms of years? 10 years, 20 years, 30 years?
I don't know.
One more question. The EMF, would it be equal to like a five-horsepower well motor? Or would it be less than that?
Are you talking about noise, or are you talking about magnetic?
EMF generation?
So EMFs are electrical or magnetic radiation coming from?
And a five-horsepower motor generates quite a bit of electromagnetic radiation from running, doesn't it?
Well, so the radiation comes from the electrons moving through the line, not necessarily from the motor itself. So, and those dissipate, even if it was alternating current, alternating current dissipates within something like five or 10 feet. I mean, that's why they've studied the concerns, I mean, they specifically studied utility lines and concerns of people living near utility lines, and, I mean, I think if there were, I mean, numerous studies have been done, and I think if there were a concern, we wouldn't be allowed to continue to put up utility lines around the City of Lancaster close to all these homes.
Yes.
On your initial layout here, you show a proposed access to the property at the northeast corner of the development, away from the neighbors. Is that where you intend to put the access?
Yeah, correct. Yeah, and that's, yeah, thank you for pointing that out. That's purposely planned that way, so that it's a fair distance from our access point to the neighbor's home. So they certainly aren't going to hear, it would be unusual for them to be able to hear a vehicle entering the site, and the activities associated with the traffic is certainly not noise-generating activity.
And when you do maintain the properties, such as washing the panels, et cetera, what hours of the day and days of the week is that typically performed?
No, as we said, it's only once or twice a year, so it would clearly be during the daylight hours. And, you know, and that's, another good point is, is that because it's a solar facility, right, and it's tracking the sun, it's only operating in daylight hours, and it goes to sleep basically at night, and the panels become, go to what we call stow position. And so it's, there is no real noise coming from the plant in the evening hours. And in terms of, in terms of washing the panels, it's typically a water truck that's just driven through the site, and the panels are just sprayed down is all. It's a very simple process.
Okay. Any other questions?
My questions would be for staff. I was wondering if maybe, since this is a zoning change, if they could explain to us the difference between what semi-rural residential to rural residential would mean, and also can both of those zones have these types of panels put on them? Because I've seen these types of tracking panels on a house out on 60th near Avenue E.
I guess I'll answer your second question first. As far as whether you could put panels within either SRR or RR 2.5, yes, you could do them in either. The difference is, however, that in an SRR zone, they would have to be developed for the specific use of the site. You know, someone operating a farm, someone operating, you know, or their own residence at that location, they, basically, they couldn't create a system that distributes electricity into the grid. The RR 2.5 zone does allow for the development of a facility that is essentially a commercial-type facility where the intent is to generate electricity and drive it into the grid for sale. Other differences, all of, the SRR zone, RR 1 zone, and RR 2.5 zone are all acceptable zoning classifications for what's known as the non-urban area of the city under the general plan. The basic difference between them, outside of a few use variations, is the density of residential development if someone were to use the site for residential development. In an SRR zone, you could have development of houses on half-acre lots, essentially 20,000 square foot lots. In an RR 2.5 zone, if someone were to look to develop residential-type uses, they could, they would have to have lot sizes of 100,000 square feet minimum to do that. So there is a difference in potential residential density between the two. The other major difference is that both RR 1 and RR 2.5 allow for a greater range of agricultural types of uses if a property is used for that. An SRR zone is more restrictive in that sense.
So either property, if a person bought it to build a private home on it, like Mr. Mills' home, he could have? Mills' home, he could have a neighbor that could have these very same solar panels on them, and we wouldn't have to do anything here today, and you would have that, right?
Correct. I mean, where you have installation of, of solar panels, state law basically says you're limited if, if they're for private use on what you can review. So, so in theory, yes, that could happen.
I apologize, I kind of lost track of this, I lost control. I do have a question for the applicant. I'm sorry you had to sit down before we finished with you, we should have closed the public hearing. My question refers to the inverters. Do you, and on the map, it doesn't show where those inverters would be. Can you tell me where they would be and how many you would have?
Yeah, they're right, yeah, they're right, so, wait, here, can I have the pointer? So we locate the inverters or converters always in the center of the plant, so right there is one, right there is one, and right there is one.
Okay, so those three concrete pads down the middle?
Correct.
Okay, so they're not on the side?
Right.
Okay. So it's my understanding that really would be the only noise contributor on the property?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's correct.
And they would only be running, obviously, when?
When there's sunlight.
Okay. Okay. That, okay. Do we have any other questions? Okay. At this point, it would be appropriate to close the public hearing without, without any objection, and to open up for commission discussion and/or entertain a motion. Sorry, we just closed the public meeting. Do we have any questions for staff? Any comments? And it would be appropriate for a motion at this time? If we have one, if anybody would like to make one?
I'd like to move that we rezone the property from single rural residential to RR2.5 rural residential, one dwelling unit per 2.5 acres.
Do we have a second?
Second then.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Okay, the, the resolution recommending approval of the zone change to the city council is adopted?
Okay, at this time, it would be appropriate for a motion on the conditional use permit. We have a motion.
I make a motion that we adopt number 1104, approving conditional use permit number 10-23. The approval of CUP number 1023 is not valid until the effective date of zone change number 10-03.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Okay, motion passes, oops. Okay, motion passes 6-0. For reference of, of the people in the audience, the zone change request does need to go forward to the city council. That will be scheduled for one of their meetings. The earliest meeting that it can be scheduled for is, I believe, April the, what, 2nd Tuesday, 12th, April the 12th. I, I don't know at this time if it will be scheduled for that, but that would be the most likely date.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is new public hearings. We have item number three, conditional use permit, number 10-28, for a conditional use permit for a banquet facility for private catered events, and to allow alcohol, beer and wine to be served or sold on the premises in the downtown Lancaster SP 08-01 zone. The public hearing is now open on this matter. Let the record reflect that we have received uncontested letter from the applicant agreeing to all conditions. Do we have any speakers, Mr. Ludiki?
We do not have any speakers, Mr. Chairman, but we also do not have the applicant, I believe. She, she has apparently registered her comment or her, her position in a letter, however, she is not present. If, and I only bring this up because we can give you the staff report and, and so forth, but if there are questions that you wish to ask her, she is not available to ask.
Okay, and I would like to state that I did have some questions for the applicant, so it might, I don't know about the rest of the commissioners, so it might be appropriate to, for a, a motion to table this until the next meeting?
I'd like to move that we continue this to the next meeting.
Second then.
We have a second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to, to continue this until our next meeting. Any discussion? Okay, let's please vote.
A couple of things, members of the commission. Number one, we will place this on the April 18th agenda. Second thing, I, I don't know if you're prepared at this time, but if there are specific areas of concern that we could relay to the applicant that would assist her in preparing, and you're willing to voice those at this point, that would probably be helpful, but...
Do we have any concerns right now?
I've got two concerns. It appears that there's a possible loophole in the analysis. It's stated here, if beer and wine or spirits is served without charge, a permit from the ABC is not necessary. So that's one concern that I have. And then, another concern I have is that it's possible that if, permit alcoholic beverages to be sold and served on the premises and consumed on or off, off the premises with a conditional use permit, that's what concerns me, is serving the alcohol off the premises.
I have concerns about controlling the crowd, parking, what kind of security that they would have.
Okay. Any others? Okay. I would also like to state that my concern is the alcohol control, and we can get into that at the next meeting.
I guess that was my basic concern.
Okay. Okay, anything else? Okay. That concludes our action items. The next item on the agenda is the director's announcements. Mr. Ludiki, do you have any?
No, Mr. Vice Chairman, I actually don't. Thank you.
Okay. That moves us to the commission agenda. Are there any agenda items that the commission would like to bring forward this evening? Nope? Okay. Public business from the floor, non-agendized items. This portion of the agenda allows an individual the opportunity to address the commission on any subject regarding city business. Under state legislation, no action can be taken on non-agenda items. Members of the public should be aware of this when addressing the commission regarding items not specifically referenced on the agenda. Please complete a speaker card for the recording secretary. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. Do we have any speakers this evening?
I have no cards for public business from the floor, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Do we have any non-agendized items, speakers? No, I just said that. Okay, this meeting is adjourned. I thank you very much for coming this evening. We're adjourned till Monday, April 11th, 2011, at 5:30 PM in the planning conference room, City Hall. Thank you.
Good evening, folks. It's now just past 6:00 PM, and the regular session of the planning commission of the city of Lancaster is now in session. I'll offer the invocation this evening, and Vice Chairman Jakes will lead us in the pledge. If you'd please write. Shall we all pray together? We thank you, Father, for this day and for the many blessings you have bestowed upon our community of Lancaster. We honor and pray for those serving members of the armed forces, and we remember and are grateful for those who've served, and especially those who've sacrificed their life for the freedoms we enjoy in this great country. We humbly ask you for your help and for your guidance in identifying the problems we can rectify in our community. Guide us in our efforts to administer the planning commission objectives. Help us to use our time and energy wisely, not to waste it on insignificant matters that benefit no one. Please bless us all to your service. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Please join me in our pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the...